Good morning, welcome to the regular session for the Board of Supervisors, May 27th. All call please, Mr. Walker.
Schwartz.
He said.
Yeah.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Curtinback?
Here.
Paul.
Here. Please join in a moment of silence and reflect on today's actions. Please stand in favor to join in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one on the agenda, to receive, the agenda is proposed or amended, so move.
Send.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, public comments, this is a portion of the meeting for anyone who wishes to address the board on an issue that is not on today's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to item three, claims and payments, this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors to approve expenditures that the county auditor be authorized and direct to issue payments against various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So move.
Second.
Good morning, Board, our total bill payment today is $3,853,769.88. And out of that, the 60-40 fund is $2,894.35. We're making a number of large payments today, we're making the first annual payment to acts on enterprises for the sheriff's body camera taser release, that is $212,896.92. We are also making our annual bond principal and some annual interest payment today, and the total of all loans is $3,46,900.
That one, how we did that?
We are paying for the purchase of a pickup truck for maintenance, $41,220. Apartment on the Washburn fence for $44,822.89. The assessor's office is purchasing some aerial photography from pictometry for $170,870. That's most of the large incident items today, any questions? Good.
Resolution, roll call please.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz? Brand?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board, Captain and close engineer, all roads are in good condition, but I did want to bring something to your attention, I had emailed it to you last week that I know how emails can pile up in our inbox, so, last week, I was notified that the courier did not publish our notice of our, we needed to publish a notice for our public hearing for our seal code project, we had anticipated that that being published in the courier on approximately May 8th. In speaking with Mike Tryon, we decided that we just did not need to go back on the agenda, but I wanted to make you aware of it, so I wanted to make you aware of that, and it is supposed to be published, or it was supposed to be published, excuse me, on approximately May 22nd, I have not checked that yet, but I just wanted to make you aware of that, that we are pushing that hearing back for the seal code, we have notified our seal code vendors that we didn't need to push it back. Can I answer any questions?
You know why they didn't publish it? Obviously, they could answer that better, but...
I, I don't know, Michelle in Formosa, do you have any?
I, they're, courier's a very different entity these days, those notices get handled all over the country, no, it's funny, it's just, yeah, it's nerve-wracking for all of us who have deadlines to make, till you see it in your hands that it's in the paper, it's a little nerve-wracking, but, it's just the state of industry today, I think.
Mike, what would have happened had we not seen that? I mean, I went to my own...
If, if it had been brought to my attention, we've gone through the process after not having seen it, and we hadn't started the project, I would have asked that we, we go back and fix it, if we hadn't started the project, then, I think we're in a different situation, and I think we can rely on the fact that it was a good, good faith on our part, and we did everything that we were supposed to have done to comply in that circumstance, it was, if you know control, the fault, or even knowledge of ours initially, that it had, fortunately, we caught the fact that it hadn't been published, and this is, this underscores the importance of checking to make sure things are published on the date they say they're going to be published, in this case, I don't know if we ever got a response saying they're publishing, I don't remember, but I mean, I remember the conversation about it, and I, I just didn't feel that we could, we could go forward with the hearing as though it had been those requirements, but...
Captain, when you contacted the vendors, everyone kind of understood?
Yes, because, yeah, we had, we had only received one bid by that point, so we just told them we were, needed to defer the, the public hearing.
Thank you.
Morning, Amanda Bessemer, HR Director, this is the update for open enrollment, we have about sixty people that haven't actually opened them, like, so we're just gonna be sending out a lot of reminders to anybody to complete their open enrollment, but, we're at over seventy-five percent done, so it's the last week to make any of those changes, and it's worked pretty well, you know, again, it's kind of a new process that everybody has to go in and actually review all their current benefits, existing benefits, if, you know, elect to continue them, or even if you don't have benefits, elect to continue to not have benefits, or to make changes, so, any questions on open enrollment so far?
So, everyone, even if they're not making any changes, still have some...
Right, yep, because they're all benefit eligible, so, and then there's other benefits they can see that they may want to participate in outside of medical coverage or dental coverage, so... For example, like, our basic life insurance is on there, so make sure it's the right beneficiaries, things like that, but, or if you want to do voluntary supplemental life insurance, but, that's all I have for today, thanks.
Thank you.
I also wanted to give an update, as you all know, our bond sale is today, we did have bond rating issued by Moody's Investment Services last week, and I thought I would just mention a little bit about that, they did assign us the AA2 rating, which is the same as we've had for a while. They commented that it, on our strong finances and our low long-term liabilities being reasons for that good rating, they also mentioned things that could lead to an upgrade would be bolstering of resident wealth and income, and also expansion of the local economy, and factors that could lead to a downgrade would be a substantial weakening of our cash and fund balances below fifty percent, and also a material increase in our long-term leverage, which is basically the amount of our long-term debt compared to our annual revenue, so, those are things we always need to monitor, and that's one of the reasons you always hear me say we need to keep reserves and do that, it's, it is for those reasons, it's always easier to borrow money at low rates when you have money in the bank, so, that's one of the things I believe in doing. And just a reminder, the, the bond sale meeting at one o'clock today at the Conservation Building, where we will hopefully be making an award at a low rate, and I, I think that's everything for me today.
All right, moving on to minutes approval for the May 20th meeting.
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion, uh, motion is approved. Item six, hearing, item five for FY25 budget amendment, item seven, this is the consent agenda, the items listed will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion, unless someone from the board of the public requests that specific items be considered separately, so move.
Second.
Motion and second, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Brand?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item 8A, a resolution to approve and direct the chair to signs per saying the collective bargaining agreement between Blackhawk County and Unit 9 sworn sergeants, represented by International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBEW Local 204, effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2029.
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Have any discussion or...
Any questions on this, so, pretty straightforward at this point formality for you to finally, or for you to approve the final on collective bargaining agreement for the sworn sergeants, we'll file it with FER and put it on the website, and all of those benefits and everything will begin on July 1st, so, payroll is, working hard to get that information updated in our payroll system, but, any other comments or questions on this?
I was gonna ask something, I was reading through that, compensatory bank maximum balance, it's at ninety-six, which I know it is at a lot of different agencies, what happens, somebody goes through, or a relative goes through a pretty significant medical issue, and ends up burning through all their time, at what point does long-term disability or anything kick in? Like, like, I guess what I'm getting at is if, if that cap were to be adjusted upward, would buy more time?
So, it used to be, yeah, so, currently, they have, you get a hundred and twenty hours of sick time, you get, you know, at least anywhere from two to five weeks of vacation, you earn a week of, like, casual time plus a birthday holiday, so, all of that can be used to support time off in a situation of your own illness, or, like, a family member's, it's limited on family, I think it's fifteen days of sick that you can use, long-term disability or long, that's really only for your own injury, we do have a plan that kicks in after ninety days, or when your accruals exhaust, whichever happens first, so, if there's, like, a major catastrophic situation, or, like, a personal illness, we do have a long-term disability plan that the county pays for, short-term one is all based on those, and then you have the comp time that you can also, and ninety-six hours that you can bank up, so, you can't necessarily buy more time by working more, but you can earn up to ninety-six, and, and then you can use it, but I don't know that we've actually gone above a bank higher than ninety-six, we used to, we used to not cap the utilization of it, but that was new, I think, three or four years ago, so, but I know some agencies, you can bank up to, I think upwards of two hundred or three hundred hours of comp time.
Yeah.
Nate was trying to...
Hear me, sorry, my earbuds won't... We had people a few years ago before we put that in that were using literally four-hundred-and-fifty-plus hours of comp time a year, which, so that just creates that much more overtime, then it would just become a downward spiral for us, that was about impossible to manage, so we got that cap in at ninety-six for a reason.
And it's the utilization, so, we did have, we had people exhausting their whole sick time, all their vacation time, and then, we're basically be working more on not their shift to earn time and a half for working, so it just was a, an area that, an opportunity that, when we came to the union, said, this isn't working that great, we came up with ninety-six based on the average of what people most use, but we had some outliers that were really, kind of, utilizing it more than typical, so, but, thanks Nate.
Yeah, that makes, I see why that makes sense now.
And then, I wouldn't say it's something that, it does come up, because it was a change, I think, we have a few one-off situations where someone says, well, if I would have been able to just work more, I could earn more comp paid time, comp time off, I think I've had two situations that I can think of, that have come up where that maybe would have, you know, utilized, benefited them, but we still have the catastrophic sick donation program, we have long-term disability, we give a lot of generous time off, and we do want people to utilize it in a way that they kind of plan for those, or at least, the sick time isn't meant to be used every month and a month out, so it's kind of, it's given in a way that it should help with those short-term needs, but it does happen to new hires, sometimes with, in that first year where they're not, they can't even accrue that much time, and that's usually where we engage in the catastrophic sick, or we've talked about potentially other policies like paid rental leave and things like that, to kind of help offset that.
Yeah, I wasn't picking it, I was just looking at it, because, what, having gone through a situation with my wife a few years ago, that put me off work for an extensive period of time, I was thankful to have the bank that I had set up.
Yep.
But, of course, I've been planning for a worst-case scenario for a long time.
And that's what we try to remind staff, especially those that have been here, you know, five, six, seven years, and it's like, if you don't have any sick time, and you don't have any FMLA, like, that's concerning, we're really, we're, I think the union's been really open to that, that, you know, understanding that, that's intended to be a safety net as well, so, yeah, but, it's a good, yeah, I, I think it'll probably always be examined each year that we have negotiations with comp time, because it was a change for people, but...
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Do you have a motion and a second on this, this is a resolution, so roll call please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item 8B, a resolution to approve proposed 2080 agreement, a proposed 2080 agreement between Blackhawk County, the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office, City of Waterloo, and Waterloo Police Department, for the financing and use of proposed evidence intake facility to be constructed, owned, and maintained by the City of Waterloo, for which Blackhawk County will pay $750,000 towards construction of the facility, and for which project, Blackhawk County will make annual payments for twenty-five years towards the operating, sorry, twenty years, towards the operating expense of the facility pursuant to a separate agreement.
So move.
Second. All right, maybe Mike, do you want to speak up first, this is 2080?
I'll go ahead and give you an overview, and so, we've been back and forth on this quite a bit right now, and, bottom line is, this sets up a fifty-year joint point with the City of Waterloo, wherein they're gonna construct and pay for a facility, they're gonna provide us proofs of those payments, we're going to pay them $750,000 towards the construction of that project, upon receiving at least that much in terms of proof of construction expenses. Other highlights of the agreement are the fact that, if for whatever reason, you know, there, there are ways that it can be terminated early, it's unlikely, and we've, we've made a pretty robust in that regard, but if there were a termination within fifteen years, I mean, less than fifteen years of the commencement of this agreement, they would have, the city would have to reimburse us whatever we paid toward it, in addition, we're going to participate in the, or at least be able to give it a bid letting process, ultimately, the city would have the final say on this, we are not going to pay more than one-half of any invoice for construction, I didn't make that clear when I first mentioned the $750,000, funding source to be disclosed, there are certain other provisions, but I would just mention the fact that, I mean, a number of other provisions, but I'd mention the fact that, after the back and forth, my understanding was that I was to tee up a, you know, the last thing the city teed up to us, and this was Marty Peterson, this wasn't authorized officially by the city, today we're talking about official authorization by the county, but he proposed gradually increasing annual payments, I believe, beginning with the amount of $10,000 per year, finishing with my $15,000, $10,000, or something like that, but in any event, we've lowered those amounts, that actually, yeah, went up to $16,000, I'm looking at it right here, we've lowered those amounts annually in a separate agreement, we provided for a separate agreement, lowered those amounts in that agreement, and made them capped at twenty-five percent of the, so there's two-way cap, it's twenty-five percent of the operating expenses up to the amounts of $10,000 in the first five years, $10,500 in the next five years, $11,000 in the next five years, and $11,500 in the final five years of that twenty-year period, and that's actually item C on this agenda where we talk about the details there, so, tho, those are kind of how it's laid out, this, right now, you know, nothing's been approved by anyone, we're, we're talking about approving now, so any changes can be made, that's why I didn't provide an absolute clean copy, you can see the changes that have been made on there, but, this is one of three agreements that is being put before the board today for official approval, the other two being the operating expense agreement, and then the policy that's primarily between the sheriff's office and police department, for how their joint use, where it goes, so that's, I, I think, pretty detailed overview, if there's any other questions you have, let me know.
And this is just our draft, as far as, the city's not seen this at all, so this would be after we approve what we do today, or...
Unless somebody else has sent them to, sent it to the city, the city hasn't seen it, I haven't sent it to the city.
So I just meant then their response would be, could be that they don't accept it, or they find some challenge.
The city could either accept it as, as provided, they could reject it completely, and say they don't want anything to do with it now, they could counter with some other, my guess is the, the operating expense payment, possibly the fifty years might be, could be sticking points, I, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna predict what the city's going to do, but based on the conversations I've had, just with the people within the county who have been talking to the city, I would like to think those would not be sticking points, but, that's, the, the one thing about the way that we've structured this operating expense agreement, and I'm getting on to item C, I realize, but they go together, so that's all right, is that, the city's gonna have a little more administrative work to do on this, they're gonna have to provide us what their operating expenses are, I've created an agreement that defines those operating expenses, and, you know, think of utilities, basic upkeep, things like that, janitorial, pest control, grounds maintenance, to the extent that creates expenses for the city, then, they need to provide us with some proof of that, I've provided that in that, in that proposed operating expenses agreement.
My questions, I guess, probably is what you're waiting for, and, and many of the comments I've made previously, though I didn't really intend to go there, but I know when we had the initial conversation, $500,000 was thrown out, and before the end of the meeting, there was a couple that at least had agreed or thought, agree, there was some agreement on $750,000, Rich, I know you proposed, looking at an agreement kind of to, I thought at the time it was probably to help with the reserves, we were looking at reserves and what the impact was gonna be on this, and so, to me, I thought we were considering an either-or, and if the long-term agreement got us free and clear a little bit easier from our reserves, we wouldn't, we'd utilize that possibly, or at least we were considering it, rather than just the cash outlay, and, it does seem, and maybe, there've been conversations, and I just haven't been a part of those, but I said, so it was me trying to understand why now we have both, it looks like we're doing the $750 outlay of reserves, I mean, not that we haven't voted on it, and it could change, I don't mean that, but I, that, and also, two hundred and some thousand, two fifteen, maybe two, something like that, the, the agreement with the maintenance, so, I was just, I guess, curious that somewhere along the way, we ended up with the two, and a larger amount than the two fifty, so we're closer to probably a million dollars with the seven fifty, and, I guess, justification, I guess, or verification, some kind of why that, and why we went that route to agreements and more money.
As I recall from the conversation, there were a couple of us that expressed a willingness at seven fifty, to, to, to make that the starting point for this 2080, because we had to, we had to give a dollar amount in order to get this, keep the ball rolling, right? In terms of the operating expenses, which, yeah, does add a couple hundred thousand dollars over the course of the agreement, if, remembering correctly, that came after the initial conversation of 1.5, Nate went into his budget and said that he was comfortable covering those expenses, so we wouldn't have to come out of reserves for that additional two hundred and change, that had been at seven fifty, so...
Sorry for interrupting supervisor Hall, but, but what it's for, the way that this proposed operating expense structure does put it on the sheriff, the sheriff's office to make that payment.
I probably threw the first concern, when I seen those numbers going up to $16,000 a year, in year fifteen through twenty, that was getting, to me, a little beyond what I thought would be normal expenses, and it is only for the twenty years, so, then, there was a concern also about a percentage of the annual costs, yes, I do believe that the county should fund some of that, but then it was, are we funding more than operating costs for a facility like that compared to what we're already paying out for the training center, for the sheriff's office already, so, I think that's where Davis' comments came in about, should this be more like a twenty-five percent, if we're looking at, we're gonna have twenty-five percent of the building operations there, then it makes sense to give twenty-five percent of those annual fees, so that's where the second part of the operating expenses came in, how it's formed today.
Well, I would obviously disagree that we will have twenty-five percent of the building, but, that we have use, I know, supposedly have the lab and processing, or processing at least part of the building, I would agree, yeah, part of what's concerned me, I guess, and, I know Nate has a different opinion of this, but as far as the cost, you know, we've never really had a good feeling of what the costs are at the county for this service, whether it's sending the equipment or vehicles and different things out, what that is, so it's a benefit, but, we've never really had the volume of what, how much we would use it, and I know early on, when we had those conversations with Sheriff Thompson, it was a very small number, it was like five percent of the volume that this county would be using, so, to me, there was some...
Duck, can I jump in real quick? I had the, the investigators pull it, and, I'm sorry, my, my earbuds wouldn't connect in here, so I don't know if I can even be heard very well, but, the investigators in there have pulled the numbers, and we're averaging about a hundred cases a year the last three years that were taken to Ankeny, so the vast majority of that, some of those may be, you know, we saved up till we have a few trips at a time, some may be one at a time, but then we have to go back and get that stuff and bring it back as well, so the vast majority of that is now gonna be, not only as man-hours saved, but the miles saved as well, and then you talk about just to, we're gonna be able to expedite processing that stuff, so, something that may have sat for a month or two, or gone down there and been, you know, fifth, tenth, twentieth in line to get processed on something, in the meantime, we've got a burglar, or a rapist, or somebody else running around with evidence that could have been processed here at a timely manner, so we, we're talking a hundred cases a year, that's gonna save us going to Des Moines on, as well as having a timely manner we can get here.
Oh, and, and I was never disputing Nate that, that we weren't using it, and it won't be a benefit to us, like I said, I, I think this was a, probably an excellent offer of partnership, I wish we had had such an offer when we were doing it, it's something that we would have, you know, entertained as well, so, but I think, as far as us benefiting by the facility, and the use, and the shared partnership, I think that absolutely, I think it was just some of the information that would verify, I guess, what our contribution would be, and how much, and whether it's a...
Keep in mind too, that, you know, we're talking, the building, obviously, even if it's at a million dollars, whatever, we're not gonna be able to build anything for that, but as we talked with them earlier, they're bringing almost a million dollars worth of lab equipment, plus the experience, plus the expertise to use that, and that we're gonna have access to, so, I mean, for something that's been a need for at least four years for us, numbers for you, we've been able to pull those numbers, we're talking a hundred cases a year that we're not taking to Ankeny now, that's, that's pretty big right there.
Well, thank you, I, that's the first I've heard of those numbers, so thank you for having those available, or for the work that was done for that, but, I, I, like I said, it's not that the relationship in doing this isn't a benefit to us, I certainly see that, and, it was just looking at the dollar amount that we're contributing, and not being able to come to terms, I guess, with a million dollars for a facility we're not going to, and will use, but not to what, to what degree, and then the, the maintenance one was really just somewhat similar, thinking that we weren't, we weren't, it's ninety percent gonna be a hundred percent used by the City of Waterloo, it will be used by us... It will be used by us for that percentage of work that we will be doing, whatever that is. But then the twenty-five percent, while I appreciate that it wasn't the full ten or it was a twenty-five percent, I mean, what those utilities and things.
We're gonna be using about forty percent of that building. I don't know where twenty-five came from, but we're gonna be using about forty percent of that building.
I know. But the, no argument there that whatever you use, that's up to you and your staff as well as theirs. But it was just the designated space for us was such a small, sixteen hundred square feet, plus the utilization, which would be case by case, Nate, so that, it was, that was all. Just the maintenance agreement, I was looking at it being an either or.
We could have expanded that. They'd have given us more storage space if we wanted it. We didn't go overboard on it. We, the lab is the main thing we want. Some storage is good. Again, we need that climate control. So, I mean, if your hangup is that we don't have much storage space there, we could increase that, but we don't need it. So we're trying to keep that down to, to a realistic need for us.
I know, and we're keep utilizing our own storage space, we're keeping that as well. So that's all part of this too. It's, like I said, it's not that I disagree with us going forward with it, I just have a difficult time with the amount. So, but, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, to the, to the point, I know that B and C are pretty closely intertwined, so I don't know how much we can talk about one versus the other at this point, but.
They're all on the agenda, so we can talk about both.
So, so I threw out twenty-five percent. Because of a three million dollar facility, seven hundred and fifty thousand is about a quarter of that cost. It seems reasonable if we're gonna pay for a quarter of the building, that we would keep, pay for a quarter of the operating expense within reason, right? Which is why it's not to exceed twenty-five percent or the dollar amounts that are listed. I, I don't, I don't think that was necessarily a, a piece that Nate threw out, you know, based off of utilization of square footage of, of the space or any of that. It was our contribution to the structure and keeping that proportionate with the, our contribution in proportion of ongoing operating expense.
And while you're gone, Linda, I asked Michelle to look into the crystal ball, our future. When Jess and I first came in, she did a presentation, so we can learn about the financial situation under the county. So I asked Michelle to do some best case scenario research for us, where our fund balance would be looking ahead. We got a five-year, where we're asking the departments to give us an idea what their capital needs are. And then also where we stand on some of the other, Michelle, can you bring that up?
Give us a little bit of that. Try. I'm getting an air message I don't like. It says my, the USB needs. Sorry, this slide happens when you wait till it starts. Good, maybe we can get here.
Michelle?
Not yet. There you go. Things to share today. Okay. So we, we have talked about our fund balance several times. So this slide talks through the commitments that we're talking about making just for fiscal twenty-five. I have, I just put question marks in there for this year's performance as we are far from the end of the year really. The turnover pool, today it's running, the salary savings are about a million. They've been there for about a month, so I don't know whether that's gonna increase or decrease by the end of two. You, the board has elected to fund another three hundred and twenty-four thousand to community agencies this year, so I've added that. We've made the commitment to the Waterloo support court. We also have approved, the ARPA approved projects to the tune of needing an extra eight hundred and thirty-five thousand that'll have to come out of fund balance. And then the twenty-five capital requests, and this is just the amounts that don't qualify for the bond issue of a million of twenty-four thousand. So we're anticipating using about three point two million of our unassigned fund balance, which we started out at about twenty-eight five, I think, twenty-eight four. So then supervisor Kurtin Buck did ask me what that would look like if we put in the seven fifty for the crime lab. That will bring us up to using about four million of our fund balance this year, which approximately gets us to fifty percent. As a, of the assigned fund balance remaining is a percentage of projected expenses, which again are an estimate at this point this year.
So the amount that's pledged in the operating agreement, is that designated anywhere?
That is not in here because that will be a separate thing, that's a reimbursement for shared costs annually. So that two hundred thousand is something that we're gonna have to take up our operating budget this year.
Is that what a general operating or does that come?
Correct, that's gonna come out of your three fifty. So it's gonna add to that issue, you will. Yeah. Want to go on?
While you had your crystal ball out?
It's really cloudy in here, bro.
Uh, the general fund performance for twenty-five?
Um, yeah, it's really hard to guesstimate that right now.
That's why we don't all have crystal balls.
Exactly. They just don't work very well. I mean, interest revenue is running very strong, but there's other revenue sources and if, um, the sheriff is still on, a lot of it is coming from the sheriff's department. I don't know if you have any comments about that. But, yeah, it's, I don't think, I expect we will come out slightly ahead now, but it's really hard to tell. We've got, gotta get through, we paid most of the May bills in June, then we paid June bills in July, so we really have two months of expense to go yet. And because it's spring, expenses pick up at this time of year, so that makes it even harder. It's not consistent every month, so we don't know for sure where we're going yet.
One of the other concerns I had to share with Michelle, the best you can do is these numbers is the best guess scenario. We're also facing a, a chance that the state legislature's gonna change our abilities and how we do our finances in the future. So that was also a concern in, in looking at this for me and trying to get an idea where we're at looking in the future. So I want to thank Michelle for calming down some of my concerns where we were coming up with this. But I felt more comfortable after seeing this long-term, how it's, things are looking.
Well, the only thing added in this that wasn't in budget is the seven fifty, correct?
Correct.
I mean, that's the, that's the same, and we were about forty-nine percent or something like that.
And I reduce, but I, what really at the bottom line, the end of the day, what's happened so far is I took out the million dollar turnover because we know we will have some savings. And put in the seven fifty. So that's really where we are. And in terms of future things, you know, we, we keep talking about that the legislature's taking away our ability to bond for equipment, which that includes things like five cars for the sheriff's department every year, plus other equipment for many departments. That amount, what we're predicting to spend each year over the next five is on this slide. It runs about just over a million a year. That fifty is a little lower, but it's also a long ways out there for departments. So I suspect by the time we get there and with inflation, that's probably gonna be at about that one point one million dollar range too, over time. So if we can, if, and so in the future, how we, we had four million in commitment out of our fund balance for this year. In the future, if all we take out of fund balance is the capital, we're still gonna be down to thirty-five point six percent by fiscal thirty. Again, I've had to just make estimates, you know, of annual expenses, which I have added a factor in for increases in expenses, including the bargaining unit contracts and those kind of things. But those, those are gonna vary in real life. That, that's just the best I can do right now.
And are, are the dollars will all be utilized by when estimate?
They should be spent by December twenty-sixth. Most of them, I think by September. There may be a few lagging things, but, but because you've committed them now, that will move out of the unassigned fund balance category and into a committed one. Right now, so it's gonna come out of our unassigned right now for fiscal twenty-five, because we did that this year. And the last thing that Rich asked me to do, which I first said no, then I tried. Because it's hard to be held to this, right? As a finance person, I honestly don't control very much of the spending and revenue. I account for or track what at least two dozen other people, really it's their responsibility to do. So I have attempted to show you graphically what might happen with our fund balance through fiscal thirty. And this should match up with the previous slide, showing it getting down to about thirty-six percent. And these, so these percentages, it's the amount of our unassigned fund balance as a percentage of the expenditures for that particular year. And the reason for that is that's the, should be the amount that's available for extra or new spending. And that, that's the number that I think our critical base is twenty-five percent. Anything above that is what we get into strategic reserves. But it was very interesting in the Moody's report this year that they actually talked about more than fifty percent. Now, that's all our operating funds, not only the general fund, so that picks up the secondary roads fund and a few others. However, we know we're planning to do things with those funds as well. So it is becoming, we need to be real careful, I guess, with how we commit that in the future to, to maintain our current rating. And we did maintain ours, even though the United States as a whole did not, so we can be, we can be proud of ourselves for that right now. I'd like to stay in there. I actually thought we could maybe get a rate increase, but with, there's too much uncertainty in the economy right now, too many things going on. So I'm just gonna put, I put a big disclaimer on here, which I'll repeat again, the amounts and the percentages are all estimates. They assume that our revenue equals our expense every year, except the, um, the amount of capital that's not eligible for bonding, that we already committed to take out of the unassigned fund balance. You know, actual, we'll know each year as each year's completed, this will fill in. I, the blue are the numbers we know, the green numbers are what we're trying to project into the future. No, those are all the things that.
It's unfortunate, I mean, I mean, it was fortunate, I guess it was good to hear the Moody's assessment, but it's the first time I've ever heard that number that high.
Yeah.
That's a little concerning, I guess, just because I see where we're going and we felt pretty good, I think, where we're at there, I mean, in that range.
They have changed their philosophy a little.
And, and knowing that we're gonna bond, have to bond for projects more too. But thank you for doing that, but yeah.
Were there other items to discuss within the twenty eighty? Other questions?
No, I didn't think it changed much either, Mike, since the last time you did it was really fifty-two.
No, it, uh, the big changes that took place since, uh, since the last draft I ever see from Marty Peterson. They're really that big of a move, I know it's the, the expense is really the biggest one out there creating that second agreement.
And the reason it was two agreements now instead of the twenty eighty covering both is why?
Well, so Michelle and I had discussed this. My understanding is that from an accounting perspective, it needs to be very, very clear that the operating expenses agreement is not part of the purchase of an interest in the property. And that's kind of what we're doing with the seven fifty and helping pay for the construction and all. Now, we could accomplish that one of the couple of ways, but because of the fact that we were going to be, the, the one way would be to put all of this in the, in the twenty eighty and make it very clear that that was, you know, for operating expenses. And that can be done, I can do that, and it's gonna involve frankly a lot of copying and pasting from several portions of the, of the operating expenses agreement. It was the opinion, as I understand it from talking to Michelle, it was the opinion of Cliff and Marson Allen, that it needed to be abundantly clear though, that this was separate apart from that seven fifty. I thought that was clearer by putting it in a separate agreement. I also thought it made it easier to, if we were gonna make a change, just to that part as part of this discussion, to have that in a separate. But it is possible, as I understand it, to go ahead and put them in the same agreement. And in fact, I, I, I think that I would attach it as, you know, kind of exhibit to the, to the regular twenty eighties, that it gets recorded together with it. And that way, if you're ever looking for it, you get on the Secretary of State's website to pull it, both will be there. I hope that answers your question.
It does, I knew there'd been back and forth early on and I just wondered why, but it made sense to me to do it the cleaner way, I guess, was have two different documents.
That was, that was what I determined originally. I was of the other opinion and kinda, kinda changed my mind and I received a little, bit not an admonition, but a little, you know, warning to say, hey, just make sure it's very, very clearly not, not part of that other payment, but what's clear that we put it in a separate agreement.
I don't suppose there'd be any appetite for anybody to reduce the amount to five hundred thousand?
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with several fifty.
That's what I meant, to just be a, I know Chris is. Do you have any thoughts, Chris? You're pretty quiet.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I still remain supportive of the project and so, um, I'd love to go in at a lesser amount, but I don't know if that gets us in the building, so.
Any thoughts on doing one or the other? Doing the seven fifty and not doing the operating or appetite for that even?
I don't know what their appetite would be for that.
Probably counter maybe now at this point, yeah.
Cause that came back to us when we first did the twenty eighty agreement. And correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but I thought they're the ones who came back with the, the annual fee.
So, yeah.
Discussion.
That was, that was Marty Peterson in his draft. And I, I don't know what his conversations were on the other end. If I could speculate, this is purely speculation here. I would speculate that there had been conversation, in fact, I know there was some conversation of an annual payment amount via addition of seven fifty. And so my, my speculation would be that they mentioned to, well, you know, they, they had talked, we'd all talked about this annual payment, so why don't we add that in? I'm not gonna speculate as to how likely it would be that the city would approve it without the annual payment. I, I really don't have a feel for that quite honestly.
Well, and I think Nate actually talked to the mayor or something too about it after he was considering it for his budget, so there, you're right, there probably were some conversations that went back on.
I've, I've talked to the mayor and Noel and Chief Duncan several times and I guess at this point, I know they're willing to accept seven fifty with some annuals and it's, ever since that first meeting where we were at a million and a half, then we came down to seven fifty, that's kind of been the number we've been at. So it's, to me, it almost feels a little distant, yes, they're like we were bartering in bad faith, all of a sudden now at the last minute, try and drop it back down again on them. Feels like that should have been done earlier in the process if we were gonna do that, I guess.
Lynn, to your, to your maybe question, again, because they're both married, we'll talk about them. I could certainly see an argument that, that the twenty-five percent of operating expense was really just in proportion to the, the, the size of our reserves contribution, right? Uh, and, and the construction contribution. Um, if, if we wanted to look at basing that off of a different number, if it was based off of the square footage of the space. Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm open to that. I'm, I'm comfortable at seven fifty and twenty-five percent, not to exceed the, the dollars listed, but, um, knowing that we were, knowing that we were at one point at one point, well, from their perspective, we were at one point five, even if we weren't, uh, maybe a little in the dark on, uh, some of those conversations, but to Nate's point, I think, yeah, we were, they came in at one point five, we came back at seven fifty in the meeting and then came in now at five. Yeah, probably would leave a little tougher taste in the mouth, and I.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, as we're thinking through and working through our strategic plan and talking about, you know, our values of collaboration, teamwork, and efficiency. And this is, we would not be able to build this structure for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and ten dollars a year on operating expenses, there's no way we could do this.
There's two parts also of that, Davis. One is, when we're looking at doing our own building, how much were we looking at that? I mean, that was just a couple of years ago. The second part is with Nate's talking about all these trips to Yankee with, or Ames with the stuff. I just think of the hours that we have staff driving back and forth. That's lost time that they can be doing their jobs back here. So the twenty-five percent, I think, the expense, uh, operating expense agreement is gonna be no more or probably less than what we're already spending transferring stuff back and forth. So I don't, I don't feel that's a major issue.
No, and the partnership, I, I've been reviewing that in my head for where this was going and wanting it to go that way too. I just think, and I think Waterloo and the county have worked so well together, probably previously and have continued to. So they probably would have done it without the agreement. So I thank you for that and the work that you've been doing. I know Nate had a, an announcement last week, I think it was, about the cooperation and collaboration that everyone was working together, so. Absolutely appreciate that, so.
Oh, I feel like might as well call the question.
Yeah, I, and I supported the project, I wish we could, I'm gonna be, as you know, probably the amount's gonna be my.
Roll call please, Michelle Walton.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Leland.
No.
Brandt.
Gonna have to abstain, unfortunately.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item eight C. The resolution to approve a proposed operating expense agreement between Blackhawk County, the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office, uh, the City of Waterloo, and the Waterloo Police Department for the annual payment of the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office of twenty-five percent, or four twenty-five percent of the annual operating expense of the proposed evidence intake facility to be owned and maintained by the City of Waterloo and to be operated jointly by the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office and the Waterloo Police Department for payments made over a period of twenty-five years, up to a twenty years, dang. Uh, period of twenty years, up to a minimum, uh, total annual operating expense payment of ten thousand dollars in each, uh, of years one through five, then up to a maximum total annual operating expense payment of ten thousand five hundred dollars in each, uh, of year six through ten, and then up to a maximum to, total annual operating expense payment of eleven thousand dollars in years eleven through fifteen, then up to a maximum total annual operating expense payment of eleven thousand five hundred dollars in each, uh, of year sixteen through twenty. So moved. Second. We need, we have the discussion on this item, sort of married both, obviously.
We've discussed it, yeah.
Yeah. All right, we'll do a roll call, uh, on the resolution.
Brandt.
I'm standing.
Leland.
No.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Moving on to item nine A, it is now time fifty-five for the FY twenty-five budget amendment. We have a motion to receive and place on file, proof publication of notice as published in the Waterloo City Hall's Courier and the Hudson Herald, Thursday, May eighth, twenty twenty-five.
So.
Second.
Motion in a second, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, item two A, uh, holding hearing with requests for oral and written comments. Are you in on five?
No, written.
In the room? All right. Do we have a motion to close the hearing, uh, and place on file any written or oral comments?
So moved.
Second.
All the papers say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion unanimously carries.
Do you want me to make up something?
Yeah, if you can.
All right, this was the actual publication that was in the paper. It did take two tries to get it in, by the way.
Come on, guys, we sound smart.
It did, it did. I'm just gonna talk about changes, the way this form works. We, it, we submit our budget as originally certified, fill in the changes, and it's our ending budget. So, um, you can see that our total revenue were actually increasing by two point four millions. But most of that, actually five million dollars comes from the sale of the bonds that we're gonna do today. I am also increasing a little bit local option revenue, so the transfer to rural is increasing. The rest of it is grant revenue, which we'll look at those details in a moment. I'm, I'm mostly trying to screw up the ARPA a little bit by bringing it down about, um, three million-ish, and then the health department had increases too. So our additional revenue is two point four. Our expenses, which, which what really matters for the amendment is, we are not allowed to spend more than what we certified in those original categories. So if we think we're going to, that's the whole purpose of doing this amendment, is to give us additional spending authority for these nine major categories, which is across all departments. Those are things that get kind of confusing as we look at that. So these are our departments in my best estimates of things that have come up since subsequent to certifying the budget. So we're suggesting that we are likely going to increase our expenses by about three point one million. And our, our net revenue over expended, expenses is a reduction of se, almost seven hundred and two thousand. And the other thing to remember, this is across all our funds. This is not just the general fund that we talked about earlier today, this is everything that we do. So that's what was published in the paper on May eighth. The departmental changes, I went through the revenue, I think, pretty detailed. Well, I thought we would spend a little more time this way on the expense side of things. You're gonna see several lines that talk about reallocating our community agency funding. And that's because when we certified the original budget, we did not know which agencies we would be funding at that time. And some of them fall into different categories. So I just picked one, and now I'm adjusting them to the appropriate category. So what I had originally expected we would do from the physical health program, I'm reducing by the hundred and one thousand. Then public health, to go along with their increased grant funding, they are increasing the expenses too, up to two hundred and thirty-three thousand. I think there's about a five thousand dollar difference, and that was from a deposit that was received in fiscal twenty-four that should have been restricted for future use and wasn't. So that will all kind of come out in the wash this year. I did go ahead and budget the expense for the sport court because the commitment was made this year. I realize we won't be paying it, but that'll just help us remember to carry it forward to twenty-six. We also budgeted again for the Cedar Falls Community Pool managing funds, and we did pay that this year. And I also reallocated community agency funding to, again, to categories where we're going to spend it. We also had an IRS payroll tax penalty this year, which we totally expected to be refunded, but that has not been received yet. And I need to, we need to fund for that expense, whether it's gonna be refunded or not. So that's in here, plus a portion of the digital ad, digital advertising for hiring that we're working on, and also the board minutes scanning project that we are undertaking. Facilities maintenance, I know you've heard Rory talk about the jail trap repairs and some other expenses for the jails. So I, we've added forty-four thousand five hundred and ten dollars to that. Pinecrest pest control and utilities for the new VA building, you're all familiar with, we're budgeting another forty-nine thousand for that. We also had some courthouse, um, control repairs. A lot of that was done very early in the year, but last July. So we're budgeting another almost twenty-nine thousand for that. I'm also picking up two million for the Veterans Affairs building renovation that we're doing with the ARPA replacement revenue, um, because that's being funded really out of the general fund since we're using replacement revenue, so I did include that as well. So general fund, we're projecting increased expenses of just under three point eight million. And actually, I didn't talk about that by fund when we went through revenue. We're only budgeting two hundred and twenty-eight thousand additional revenue, also additional expense. Then, as we continue on, general supplemental. If you recall last, for fiscal twenty-five, we did not increase the amounts we budgeted for our liability insurance program. And when those bids came in, they were more than we anticipated. So I'm adding eighty-eight thousand three hundred for those cost increases. I'm also budgeting to make the loans to Barclay and Foxtown ships for the fire truck purchase. And secondary roads fund, it seems that the backlog in equipment has caught up with itself now. So we did, and I, Kathy may be gonna speak about this more when she talks about her amendment, but this was primarily to budget for additional equipment that we were supposed to buy in previous years, but it wasn't delivered until now. So we're, again, we need to budget for everything we spend this year, so that's what we're doing here. Conservation trust fund, they had additional donation repotue, and then are also budgeting to, to use that. The local option tax fund, I increased revenue, also made this one transfers out. You know, that, that's kind, that one's kind of hard because I, we got a couple of months yet, don't know for sure if we'll need it or not, but I wanted the cushion in there. Then ARPA fund, um, this is just a stab at this. We were budgeting for the Recorder's Digitization Project this year. The second half of the Auditor Transfer Records Digitization, sorry, we're saying very fast. Capital projects, I, I just reduced that because when we certified the twenty-five budget, I budgeted to spend about everything we had left, not having a clue what was going to happen. I, as I prepared the budget, I thought, well, we're not gonna use that twelve, so I brought it down. Now I'm getting nervous I brought it down too far, but, but hopefully we'll be fine. Also, the transfer for the Lagoon Val project. Then we also had the Destination Iowa program had a change where Blackhawk County needs to receive the reimbursement from the state of Iowa for Lynn County's portion of the project. So I needed to increase our expenses to allow us to do that. We also had a couple of projects that maintenance has done, that fire alarm panel and the Hickory Hills siren, which you might remember talking about very early in the year. And I budgeted just to, the expenses related to the bond issue. So all those things bring our total expenses to three point one, um, using more fund balance in of about seven hundred and two thousand. And just a reminder, this is only, only the budget, so actuals will look some, something different. We'll, we'll, we'll know that in a few months. And I think I, I didn't remember to send this one out to you ahead of time. This breaks it down a little more by funds, I don't know. I'll think I will review each of these columns, we'll, we'll just look at the bottom. General fund shows us use, budgeting to use another three and a half million of fund balance. And that's fairly consistent with what we talked about earlier. That, that, what we talked about earlier did not really account for that increasing grant revenue. So that's why it's a little different from that number. Um, the eighty-eight thousand, again, the reduction in general supplemental, that's for the liability insurance. Then we have a couple of things going on in rural, receiving the additional funding from local option, but spending funds on the fire truck purchase. Roads shows the purchase of equipment. Conservation shows the use of the grant and spending the grant. And then ARPA, we're attempting to just make that a little closer to what we're, what I think we're really gonna do. Local option, increasing that transfer out. I did not increase the budget of revenue there, just the transfer out. And then basically Destination Iowa and the Capital Improvement Fund and the two hundred thousand and bond fund. So I think I've settled that about three times, but that's everything for the budget amendment. Questions?
Of that seven hundred and one, how much of that was not committed? I mean, I know that.
So none of it was really committed at the time that we set the budget for this year, but that's, so.
I mean, but we've got like the backlog of vehicles. We, that we've, we've budgeted for pre, years before that.
Right, well. Yeah. I don't think there's much more than that.
Okay.
Um, I couldn't quote you a number, but I think it appears that most of the departments, the turnaround time is accelerating now. But the COVID delays are, I think we're working past them. Hopefully, when you keep seeing the film of the things piling up on the docks, I hope we don't see that start happening again. We don't know, those are things we don't know.
Michelle, the IRS payroll tax penalty, that is likely to be refunded to us?
They, they assured our payroll department it was, we have not received it yet, but we keep asking, so we're hoping eventually that one will get cleared up.
How long?
It was simply a date, it was just a date written wrong on a form. This is just the cycle you get into when you have an issue like that, it takes quite a while to get them to clear it up.
Has this been going on for more than a year?
No.
Okay.
No.
Maybe the check cutters got yours.
That's what worries me, I don't know what the check cutter, but the person that works out the details, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, we didn't make that payment, oh, there, there, yeah, they're gonna be a whole day. All right. Um, we've made through the motions, do we have a resolution, um, that the FY twenty-five budget amendment be adopted?
So moved.
Motion in a second, so we have a further discussion. Roll call please, Michelle.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item nine B, uh, resolution that the finance director be directed to increase slash decrease appropriations for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five to various operating budgets for various county departments and offices as submitted by, on the attached budget amendments summary.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion on this. Resolution, uh, roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item nine C, resolution that the amendment number one of the Blackhawk County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five Secondary Roads Budget has included and approved May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the Blackhawk County Budget Amendment. As agenda, item nine A, be approved and direct the chair to sign for savings recommended by Catherine Mickelitz, the county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
As I've told you many years in the past, and Michelle just pointed out, the engineer must submit a balanced budget every year. We are receiving, we have received our equipment from FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, and I believe we are now caught up. So we need to, uh, transfer from our fund balance about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make this whole, to balance our budget. So I would ask for your permission to do that, and then we will get this amendment submitted to the Iowa DOT.
All right, it's a resolution, roll call please.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item nine D, resolution to certify unpaid water service, uh, repair costs in the amount of one thousand four hundred and three dollars at seven three zero four on the Port Road, Washburn, Iowa. To the property, as provided in ordinance number forty, chapter one three point zero five point zero four zero E of the Blackhawk County Court of Nor, Code of Ordinances, and direct the county treasurer to adjust her records accordingly, as recommended by Michelle Reed.
So moved.
Second.
This is the property we've discussed previously, so nothing, nothing new, unfortunately, no check was received.
Um, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item nine E, motion to approve a joint use policy governing the joint use of a proposed. Item nine E, Motion to Approve a Joint Use Policy Governing the Joint Use of Proposed Evidence Intake Facility by the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office and the Water Service Department. So moved. Also.
Back up.
Any further?
What this is, is its policy is primarily be, you know, between the PD and the sheriff's office primarily, but because we're getting into this financial commitment, I felt it was appropriate to put it up for approval. The public city should also approve it, and that's how I styled the approvals on it. Essentially, Sheriff Neff put together a, how the, how the joint use would be governed or how it would be, how we work on a practical day-to-day level, put, put forth a policy. I edited it a little bit language-wise, but nothing that substantially changed what Sheriff Neff put in it. My understanding is he's disgusted with the police department as well, or with Chief Duncan, and that it's anticipated that's gonna be acceptable to the sheriff as well. And basically, what it comes down to is, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna provide us the needed utilities. They're gonna provide us access to our areas twenty-four seven and access to the lab areas as well and whatever, you know, pertinent areas we need to get through to get to those places. And if there's a, if there's a, you know, a simultaneous need by both departments with the same thing in the same area, then they're gonna work it out between tools, and I think that's about the only way you can put it in there. You know, they've got the terminals priorities based upon the immediate cases that you. I think I got that right, didn't I, Sheriff?
Yep, I think you covered it, and then I've talked to Chief Duncan about it, and we're good. I know at one point it was kind of implied that maybe there shouldn't be a natural hierarchy, that the most serious crime gets it, but that doesn't really always play out the way it is. I mean, we might have someone in custody on a serious crime, and we're looking for someone on a slightly less serious crime. So, in a case like that, that one would become more important, obviously. So, it's hard to put it in black and white, but we've definitely got a working agreement that, that we'll honor each other on, so.
This is a motion. We've got a motion in a second on. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. Item nine F, Resolution to revise and retitle Management Staff Benefits Policy. Sheriff's Consolidated Communications be approved effective July one, twenty twenty-five as recommended by the policy. So moved.
Second.
Hey, Lord, so this is the first of three policies that come before you today from our most recent policy review meeting. This is just really the approving conjunction with the sworn sergeant collective bargaining agreement. The sheriff's management, it had, is how this was approached originally, that they receive the same benefits as the union. Within the sheriff's management, the command staff, whether you're a sergeant, civilian sergeant, sworn sergeant, a lieutenant captain, you receive the same benefits. And that makes sense because they all promote from within. So, we don't hire, for example, typically, unless you have a change in the elected official, they could appoint others externally. But generally, all of those positions are held from within. The same thing happens with Consolidated Communications with their newest role, the shift supervisor. So, as a individual from the union promotes to these supervisory roles or up in rank, we want to just keep the same benefit plan that they're most used to, which is why we try to follow the union contract. Now, we have two unions, so, so now we have the deputy and the dispatcher, civilian roles, which is unit five, and now, effective July one, we'll have unit nine, which is the sworn sergeant. So, we're just asking this be updated to follow the sworn sergeant collective bargaining agreement. In the past, I did include accrual schedule and usage. In the past, we typed documentation where these individuals only follow the accrual, not the actual usage of the language. I'd rather just follow it identical to what the contract says, so we don't have any discrepancies or. And just, I'll give you an example. One is like casual sick converted, so that was an accrual that wasn't actually listed on here. We did call that one out, so we really looked at this policy in the union contract and read it per the language as we, as it was intended and as best practice, but there are things that slipped through the cracks, and we just want it all to be the same. So, that's what this allows for us to do. I did not include the management staff of Consolidated. It just, does just say shift supervisors because they have, for example, there's Judy's role as director, there's the operating management for Jenny, and then they have like the network administrator role. They all follow non-bargaining plans, similar to facilities, myself, county engineer, things like that. And that just made sense to keep them, because those positions aren't typically ones that always you promote from within, into those, if that makes sense, so. And then, again, with the auditors office, they're able to assist us to get this squared away so that the benefits reflect the collective bargaining agreement and the correct policy, so.
Are any further discussions on? All right, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Leeland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Kurtenback?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item nine G, Resolution that the Food and Beverage Expenditures Policy be approved effective May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five as recommended by the Policy Review Committee. So moved.
Second.
Okay, so food and beverage expenditure policy, so this is ready for board approval and any kind of questions or feedback at this point. But this started from a need that we identified when we have specific, whether it's countywide training or there are external meetings with everything from partners in the community to vendors to opportunities with the public, that we have a place to be able to provide an appropriate amount of expected kind of food and beverage needs for that, for that meeting. So, we have not had this before, and generally, when there have been food and beverages provided, that's been at the expense of the department head or like a collection of individuals, like staff wearing jeans, for example, and they do like a collection, things like that. So, we did narrow this off other cities and counties and even the state that allows for these types of expenditures under this certain criteria. I can kind of go through each of these, but it's really, you know, intended to apply for those that, you know, for the purpose of being a public purpose policy with regards to the type of work and operations that we conduct here at the county. It's not intended for just general staff meetings, but for example, we have had four-hour countywide trainings for both employees, managers, and staff. That would be an appropriate use of this policy. It is allowed that the department head approve it within their budget. So, for example, if they have a training budget each year that they spend five thousand dollars for their staff for specific training, for example, that could be in the Veterans Fair Office or NHR, that this would be allowable to spend under that training budget line item. It does exclude things like expenditures for parties. That is not included in this at this time, so we don't do like retirement parties. Wouldn't be something that we would be using, using this policy for. Alcoholic beverages are prohibited, charitable contributions, doesn't extend to that. Food and beverage strictly for the use of county employees, such as regular office use, regular staff meetings. And then, it does exclude sales tax paid on purchases, so that sales tax is not reimbursed. There is a procedure set here for how a department head may seek reimbursement or how they can pay for that on their county credit card, but it does require that documentation be submitted with that claim for reimbursement or on the county credit card. And it does ask for a summary of the public purpose, the meeting location, the meeting agenda, the presenters, attendees, and their organizational affiliation, total number of attendees, food or beverage arrangement and estimated costs, and any payments or claims for reimbursement that may lack this, documentation will be denied, so. We talked about factors that are considered when evaluating our auditing and payment for reimbursement or refreshments or food may include that are not limited to, whether the activity is within the limits of the approved budget, whether supporting documentation is submitted timely, whether the supporting documentation is complete and adequately supports the public purpose. Again, expenditures found have not met those criteria are subject to repayment and reimbursement being denied. You have, with the policy is the attachment that is gonna be required to be submitted for each of those expenditures. I think we're looking forward to having this policy. It is well-received across all of the department heads that are familiar with having to coordinate these types of meetings or trainings and things that you'd like to have a welcoming environment, one that's reasonable to have things like bottled water available, snacks, coffee, that, that will now be a part of our training budget and one that we can utilize reasonably, so. As opposed to spending thorough money on it.
Well, I know this, as a new policy, took a lot more time and attention than I think all of us thought when we started. And I want to thank everybody that had involvement in it and put effort forward, but especially, I said, there was kind of a small subcommittee of TIE and, what, representing health, VA, HR. Amanda helped, Shereen, or the, taking a, a close look at, so that it didn't negatively impact those departments that have food use in their programs, whether it was, you know, the health services and things they're doing, or VA with their lunches. And I'm just trying to think of what else, but the conservation has programs with Hartman and different things, so that just all became kind of a larger issue that needed to be addressed or considered. And so, I thank you all that it took so much time, but I think as a new policy, we were wanting to at least try this and see how it works and, and deevaluate it, I guess, down the road and see if there are any issues, but hoping we don't, hoping we don't have any problems. Thank you. Did the hell out of it.
Just wondering, why, why was sales plat, why was sales tax excluded from reimbursement?
If we don't pay sales tax, is that correct?
Gotcha.
So, but you can get, so what, what we would, and when I roll out and communicate this, for example, if you wanted to go to Sands Club and buy food and beverage there, we have to get the tax exempt form from the auditors office, which we present to each cashier, and then they don't charge tax.
Okay.
But if you don't do that, you're just out of that, you know. So, yeah, we'll have to. I just, thank you all for considering that, and thanks again for everyone working on this. And any questions about the criteria set forth or the types of meetings? We define the public purpose expenditure, that's on the front page here. For countywide trainings, department trainings for safety, scale, competency development trainings for wealth managers and non-supervisor employees. Food and beverage for onsite meetings with the public, community partners, private entities, vendors, or other local government officials as considered customary, reasonable, reasonable amounts of coffee-related supplies, bottled water may be purchased and may be available to vendors, auditors, grantors while performing work at the county facilities. So, we have our annual audit. Each year, they come in for a few days, could be like labor negotiation. Some, we're the bargaining teams here, and those would be examples, I think, of that. Other questions?
No, I was just, I like it. My only question is, are there any parameters to kind of gauge at what point might it be? I don't wanna say, I don't even, don't wanna use the word abuse, but take advantage of maybe, and perhaps it goes a little too far. Because one's definition of reasonable might be different than, than somebody else's, you know?
So, I think that, yeah, what we have outlined here, I guess, you know, for example, if you were going to cater in a meal and you have some sort of like lunch, and we did this last year with CFU, we partnered with them for a management meeting, and it says that, you know, the cost of, and it was, in action, it was a manager training, an all-day training. And it was just more conducive for them to eat lunch at CFU rather than break, go off to Main Street and be gone for an hour plus. So, that's fifteen dollars per attendee that it can't exceed. Now, as for like, we do include that allowable food and beverages. Beverage expenditures consist of coffee, bottled water, soft drinks, donuts, cookies, snacks, items of a similar nature. So, if we start seeing anything above and beyond that, like an entire sheet cake brought in, you know, or something, I'm trying to think of, that would call for concern and that would be reviewed by the auditors office, I believe, and on that attachment aid to make sure that it does fall in line with these criteria. So, it really should, we shouldn't be seeing, you know, king-size candy bars, I guess. I mean, that's just, I, kind of an example, I suppose, but you can have pre-practice things, but they shouldn't necessarily be like. It, it's just something we'll have to kind of evaluate, I suppose, as it goes. But I think we've tried to give some guidelines, but was not necessarily, I think, too difficult.
This will be kind of tracked like per department used to, right, almost, okay.
And department heads being responsible too, that need to sign off on this, so it's not just done within the department, so that there is a checkpoint too. And I also think one of the things I don't know that you touched on was, if there's anything questionable about whether or not it's within the scope of public purpose, then they're to be bringing that forward before the purchase, so that it's kind of got the approval of the board, so that is clarified.
So, I think it'd be, it would be good for the board to just maybe go six months into this and request any that you've seen or as they come, you know, maybe not as they come up, but that's something that maybe you could certainly ask to review. It still is up to the department head elected official to approve and authorize, but certainly something you guys can look at or have Michelle or the auditors team provide a report, just so you guys have an idea, I think that would be a good idea.
Excellent. All right, I'm good with it.
This is a resolution, roll call please.
Kurtenback?
Yes.
Leeland?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Can we, can we take like a?
That's a great idea.
About three to four minutes?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah.
Look, recess. All right, welcome back to the Board Supervisors Meeting. We are on agenda item nine H. This is a resolution that the Township Official Compensation Policy be approved effective May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five as recommended by the Policy Review Committee. So moved.
Second.
All right, so this is the last policy here before you for approval from the Policy Review Committee. Just a reminder, this meeting now, the Policy Review Committee meets the second Wednesday of each month following the department head meeting. So, that's at ten fifteen, department head meeting is at nine AM, so, Wednesday. So, I have Tim here of the auditors office, that's where some of this actually originated from, through the previous budget that discussed township official compensation pay increased in this year's budget. I'm gonna let him speak to this policy. It is a new one.
Hi, Tim Jamison, Systems Real Estate Tax Manager. I think we remember during the budget deliberations, we talked about township compensation and hadn't changed in twenty-five years. The board agreed the budget to increase that from eleven dollars to twenty dollars per diem. Still need a vote on it, that was just budgeted. So, there's an item on the agenda after this that would increase the per diem pay from eleven to twenty dollars per diem. The problem that I kind of had when I was putting that resolution together is we didn't really have a policy at all before that, for one, explained what we mean by per diem. It had always been kind of assumed that meant every time they met, but I thought it would be good to kind of get that in writing. Plus, we wanted to add a per diem, a monthly per diem for the township clerks for the day that they would do paperwork. So, that's why we have this new policy to just kind of explain what we mean by per diem. It also limits the per diem for the meetings to four a year. If they needed to have more, they could ask for permission to have more, and it would come to the board for approval. There may be reasons to have more than four in a year, but typically, they don't have more than three. And this also explains that they need to fill out all the proper paperwork to become a county employee in order to get paid. That's not an easy task, especially when you live in the far reaches of the county, but in order to, to get paid, we need to have you fill out the W fours, the I nine, all of that stuff. So, that's what this policy does, it just sets up the framework for how we would pay them. And then, the next item on the agenda would be the resolution to actually increase the per diem rate from eleven to one. So, I don't know if there's any questions about the policy portion.
Tim, the only question I had was, again, that the city clerks, they can get up to four times a year for the meetings with this policy, but they also, that same month, can ask for another per diem just for doing the bookkeeping.
Correct. We, we could make them getting twelve bookkeeping per diems a year.
Right.
Once a month to do the paperwork, because it's not an insignificant amount of paperwork. You have to do balancing tax receipts, keeping track of their bank accounts, writing checks to people who mow the cemeteries or to the fire departments, preparing the budget for, per hearing, and, and, so it is a fair amount of paperwork that they do. Probably won't take a whole day, but.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars too, so.
So the resolution, do we have a motion in a second?
I don't have a motion.
Oh, so move it.
Second.
I think we did.
Not, we, oh, I'm sorry, for the township compensation.
Yeah, just for the first one, yeah, man.
I jumped ahead to this.
Oh.
I guess I'm trying to move us.
You are, you are.
Sorry. That's Karen's way of, on that elbow.
Sorry, yes, we do have a motion in a second.
All right, roll call please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Curtin Bach?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Promptly from number nine I, per Karen's request.
Yes.
Resolution to increase the compensation of township trustees and clerks from eleven dollars per diem. To twenty dollars per diem effective July one, twenty-twenty-five, be approved as recommended by Tim Jamison, Systems Real Estate Tax Manager.
So move it.
Second.
Have the discussion.
Just, just a reminder, this has not changed since nineteen ninety-nine, so this is the first increase in twenty-six years. I know it seems like a big percentage going from eleven to twenty, but if you looked at that over the course of twenty-six years, you're talking about a two and a half percent increase each year. The other part of this, I think I mentioned your airwork session, we were at the bottom of the pay rate among the largest counties in the state. We were significantly below every county that surrounds us. I think putting it up to twenty, while it doesn't put us at the top, it makes it at least respectable and hope that at least the township elected officials that we have out there would see it as like some acknowledgement that we appreciate what they do.
And this is just for a day, a days?
For a meeting.
For a meeting, which, okay.
Right, every time they meet, they can turn a timesheet to get paid a per diem for twenty dollars. And then the clerks as well would get twenty dollars for each month that they paid.
It'll be interesting to see if they do, since they've been so.
We'll get some more, we'll get a couple more.
I, I would also add that the trustees didn't really come in and ask for this, wasn't, they were complaining about it. We did have a trustee that really wanted to provide a little additional compensation for the clerk, acknowledging that the clerks do a little more work than they do on a regular basis, so.
And I did meet with him, he was very clear, he didn't, wasn't looking for himself at all with the trustees, he was just looking for the clerk to be compensated. Thanks, Tim, for looking into it further, of course.
Roll call please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Curtin Bach?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item nine J, resolution of the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for project FM dash C zero zero seven one seven five dash five five zero seven. HMA crack filling in Blackhawk County be approved and direct the chair to sign for same and authorized and direct the auditor to make final payment in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-seven cents, with a total project cost of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars, as recommended by Catherine Nicholas County Engineer. Project was contracted for a hundred and seventy-three thousand.
So move it.
Second.
Good morning again, Board. When I ask you for acceptance of a project, I like to show you a few pictures of the actual work that went on. So these are just some statistics of the project itself. It was a work in Denny's Ohio Way. Or they have done a lot of work for us throughout the county, different types of work for us. They actually did the crack filling this, this year for us. This was funded with local funds. I'm sorry, I stated that as FM funds in my email to you. We did, we are using local funds to pay for this, this work. The work started in April, they finished about ten days later. Liquidated damages of a thousand dollars were provided by the contract, but none were assessed, of course. It's just a completion date contract. They needed to have the work done by November, so they're well ahead of that completion date. And you can see they finished about eight percent under contract costs. Just a very few slides here that shows the employees of Dento spreading the, it is a hot mix that comes out of the pot. I will show you that in the next slide. It gets spread out on the cracks. We averaged about thirty-three miles of pavement were sealed with a linear feet of one, one hundred and seventeen thousand linear feet of cracks that were sealed. And then they, this is a picture of the, the pot that the hot, the hot material comes out of, it seals the cracks. And then this contractor puts like a sand blot on the, the hot tar while it's cooling so that the traffic can go over it. Some contractors use toilet paper, for example. The, this contractor uses a sand for it to cool, to allow traffic to travel over it while it's cooling. So that's really about all there is to the work. I would ask that you accept it and we be allowed to pay the retainage, the, the three percent retainage that we keep during their work.
Thank you. Any additional questions, other thoughts?
I was gonna ask if we go out and come upon, come upon part of the road that just wasn't satisfactory, that they did, they'd be able to be contacted, right, and come back out and fix it?
Yeah, we do have an inspector who's, our inspector is not with them a hundred percent of the time while they're doing this type of work, but at least once a day, we're out there checking their work and they're very good at sending crews back or they've been very good to work with.
Yeah.
If we've seen a crack that wasn't filled there satisfaction, for example.
And we got them through the bidding process too, right?
Yes, we, yeah, that, that's because it was over a hundred thousand dollars. We did, of course, have a public hearing send out the proposals and I think we had five bidders on our crack filling work. And then Coles did a bid.
Excellent, thank you.
This is a resolution, roll call please.
Leighton?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Curtin Bach?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item nine K, resolution of the lowest responsible bid received from Hole Excavation LLC Hudson, Iowa for project L seven zero one four. Stone column drainage on Union Road with a total bid of twenty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Estimates, engineer's estimate of forty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Be awarded and direct the chair to sign resolution, authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract and to receive and place on file. The contract with bond specific insurance is recommended by Catherine Nicholas County Engineer.
So move it.
Second.
So I, I just wanted to provide a few more details about this, what I'm asking for here. So South Union Road between Viking and Ridgeway, if you can picture that, that is jointly owned by the city of Cedar Falls and Blackhawk County. The county, of course, would be on the west side of the road. That is a growing portion of Cedar Falls. For example, they are currently reconstructing Viking Road and we are participating in that construction. This area is going to see a lot more traffic, a lot more growth. It is in their, City of Cedar Falls is long-term to probably pave this in an urban section, just like they're doing on Viking Road. But in the meantime, until that were happened, they would like to seal coat it. Right now it is just gravel. We do the maintenance on this portion of the road. They would like to seal coat it. We're working with them, so in order for a seal coat to be effective, we, this area does have quite a few frost boils every year. We're going to install some stone columns. I talked to you about those in the past, about how we believe that's an effective way to prevent frost boils in the future. We'll be installing some six-inch stone columns this fall is our proposal, because this is under the one hundred thousand dollar threshold pool. We were just, we put together a small, a very small set of plans. I think three pages set of plans, we sent it out to primarily the vendors who bid on our last stone column work. We received these three bids back. And a whole excavation was our little bidder at twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So I would ask that we be allowed to sign the contract and have them do the work. It'll be later this year and I'll keep you up today when the work starts.
Catherine, my first concern is it's forty percent under the estimate, twenty, well, almost twenty thousand dollars under that.
So we had some of the same concerns. We, we've used whole excavation or been associating with them for some others, some tile work, some very small work. We did speak with them and went to the, the project details and they assured us they knew what was stated in the set of plans. We really don't have any reason to not award it to them based on our conversations with them.
If there is any problem, we'd like to know that.
Yeah, we, yes, we'll work with them. We will be out there on a routine basis when this work starts.
Okay.
This is a resolution, hopefully we have a motion in a second, so roll call please.
Curtin Bach?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Yes. Item nine L, motion that the personnel requisition for the information technology intern, just temporary, proposed start date of June ninth, twenty-twenty-five, be approved as recommended by Al U I T Director.
So move it.
Second.
Morning, Board. Al U I T Director. We initially advertised this as an unpaid internship, but after discussing with the department, we felt that a paid internship would yield the best candidate, so. We do plan on adjusting our budget for next fiscal year because this is, this crossover two fiscal years. We do not plan on asking for additional funds for the board. Can I answer any questions?
Do you envision this being an internship that we'll do in future years as well?
I, I hope so. We're working with Hawkeye College. They have a great program. We have a curriculum already in mind for this, this person, so that he would align with Hawkeye College. So they, not only do they can learn, but they also help us out too, so we wanted to be of reciprocal benefit, so, yeah.
Have you thought then, I guess, of what kind of things they'll be assisting with or how they'll be assisting the department as far as?
Uh, well, I mean, some of the basic things would be, you know, answering the phones, of course, that's, that's usually one of the things, usually, no one wants to answer the phones, but you know, we need assistance with that at times because we're, we're out and about. So lots of shadowing, pretty much they can get their hands on just about anything. I mean, within reason. There are certain server things we wouldn't give them access to, but they can certainly shadow and then observe some of those processes. For sure, they're going to be there, hands-on, lots of good experience, break, fix, all, all that stuff, so, yeah. We're, we're pretty excited about it. We've never had one before. I think this is something, if this experience is good for this, for, for this one, I think we will probably ask for this again in the future and hopefully, you know, throw, throw a nice little program out of it, so.
Thank you.
Amanda still on here? Do we have a cap on how many interns we can have total?
A cap? I don't think we have a discussion about a cap necessarily. It's kind of range, like, it's, so conservation has them, public health has interns and it, it varies between ones that are paid and unpaid and if they're unpaid, that they're usually getting some kind of like a
Right.
course credit. I know attorneys have them before. I have the one budgeted, but no, I don't know about any kind of cap. It's kind of just within your budget if you're able to make it work or, and if your budget gets approved. But we could certainly explore something.
Well, no, I wasn't leaning towards that. I was like, how can we maximize the interns?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get the most employment out of them for the week, the amount of money.
Um, you know, I think there's an opportunity to explore like a more formalized internship program here to connect with the schools, the local, you know, public schools or even colleges that kind of have that career readiness and also engage, you know, I guess, those students into opportunities here, because we do have a lot of great career opportunities that may fit the educational like achievements and aspirations of many different students. So definitely, I think we have an opportunity to explore a little bit more kind of formalized program for internships here and to get more throughout the different offices. But I think at one time we had, I'm not going to get it right, but there was like a, I don't think I have this, um, years ago, JSA is the right word, but there was some kind of job shadowing, or I think we actually even had like a segment of the county was, I know, I'm sorry, Linda.
No, no, I'm trying to think.
But, um, anyways, I could look into that because I think at one point we did have some kind of program for kind of like what twenty, twenty-five years ago were interns, but that isn't the right word. I can't think of it right now. But yeah, certainly could look at maximizing those opportunities for our operations and also mutually beneficial for the students and the programs and supporting the local education.
Yeah, especially if the department's fine, that would be beneficial for them.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. We definitely, I think there's plenty examples that other departments could learn from departments that are currently utilizing them and something we could start to look at. I know I've been contacted by high schools to start having, like a student was interested in shadow. It's a little bit more of a shadowing maybe than a true internship like at the college level or post-high school education. But we've been, yeah, I've been reached out by high schools too as to would you, could I have a senior that their spring semester, part of their graduation requirements is to, you know, do a professional job shadow experience, so you've got a lot of opportunities to connect to.
I think you've done a good job. I was gonna say, if people are considering more, more internships for that reason, it kind of benefits the students, but it's beneficial to us as well and exposing them to future employment and
Right.
and things here too, so it's been.
Yeah, I would, no, I would, no cap, I mean, Rhodes has had two, I believe. You had one consistent and you had, at times, two positions. And we kind of call them seasonal, but really they're more of an intern, and I would say that's a very good season.
Yeah, we, we use the term interchangeably. It's not a formal internship program to Hawkeye or Iowa State, but.
Give some experience on the job and something that they can then hope to land a, you know, position in their chosen field, so. I don't know cap that I'm aware, but also it's just kind of not a very like firm program or direction.
Okay.
We've had an intern every fall too for the last nine years in elections and I know a couple of them have gone to other departments after.
I'm new. I didn't know that. Didn't know. Thank you.
All right, this is the motion. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor on the personnel requisition, requisition?
Aye.
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 All right, you guys will, you guys will sleep.
Item nine M, resolution of the taxes due and payable of the submitted persons as indicated, including special assessments and rates of charges, including interest, fees, and costs in accordance with the provision of subsection four twenty-seven point nine of the Code of Iowa, be suspended and the future property taxes on property owned by the persons will be suspended for such time as the person remains the owner of the parcels and during the period the person receives assistance as described in subsection four twenty-seven point nine of the Code of law.
So move it.
Second.
Does this happen often?
Every year.
I was really surprised, and I don't know, do they have to reapply every year? So just adding them up, I was really surprised by some of the amounts, how low they were as far as property tax. The total, it's about twelve thousand, just under twelve thousand dollars. I've never heard of this before. It's kind of surprising.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Resolution, roll call please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Curtin Bach?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item nine N, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh seven on Tuesday, June tenth in Board Room two oh one of Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Orangeville, Iowa, on the proposal ordinance number seven seven dash two nine seven, request by Robert and Margaret Mills to rezone point two six acres of land from CM Commercial Manufacturing to AA, Agriculture District, located at four three eight South Elk Run Road.
So move it.
Second.
Motion in a second unless there's discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion, yeah, Mr. Harys. Any reports or information from the board?
This past week, I had the privilege of joining Kathy and doing the presentation for the strategic plan. I really enjoyed getting the chance to meet everybody out there at the Rhodes Department. Very proud of the work that they do for the county. A quick heads up on upcoming events, working with Gabby. We're going to be announcing here this next week, the, working with TJ, County Assessor. We're doing presentations on understanding property assessments. Fundamental dates are Tuesday in Waterloo, June twenty-fourth, Cedar Falls, Wednesday, June twenty-fifth. There will be a limitation. We are going to look at doing a QR code or something for people to sign up because of the size of the rooms. Just waiting on final confirmation on that, getting that out probably this next. Just waiting on final confirmation on that, get that out probably this next week. Um, I believe at both the libraries, Waterloo Library and Cedar Falls Library. How's the message getting out? That's what we're going to be working on this next week. So, because of room, we want to do some kind of R S V P, just so we know where numbers we can expect and then kind of go from there. I love the idea. Uh, the second thing has been setting in on the policy committee, I don't know appointment on that is, I know Chris has listed on there, there's still another opening. I would like to be on the policy committee if at all possible, I don't know if that's going to be a line, agenda item or not, but, you know, open it.
We kind of left it open, I mean, thinking that we wanted to be on it, I think Chris has been on it since it wasn't the actual committee, but.
May I get any thoughts on that?
Sure, so last meeting we did discuss the committee like membership and really kind of treating this similar to a safety committee where we have almost representation from each department, so it is a larger committee. We even talked about, you know, voting and whether, and ultimately we discussed that we would need to come back to the board and formalize the group that will be reviewing policies. We did start assigning, we actually took the board policies first and started looking at when the last revision was on some of those and some dated back to mid two thousands, I think, so we, so we did start saying, okay, in preparation for next, meaning you'll be assigned, you know, this, this policy and it may be within your scope of interest or area or may not be, it's just that we want to get some kind of review schedule going with this larger group so that we can kind of start making more progress on our policy review process. So, but we also discussed, do we maybe need to bring forth some kind of little charter or something for the board to approve as well, just understanding what this group does and doesn't do, I've had questions about, you know, technically the board could impact any policy, which is true. You know, this is just more of a true group to like review what we have and also explore or a, a space for people to, department has select officials, the board themselves to bring forward, hey, do we need to develop a new policy for this new need? Examples like telework, the food and beverage expenditure, township official pay, so. Just wanted to highlight some of that discussion, but yes, we do have a vacant, typically we've had two board members on that committee and then it's been representatives from legal, H R, auditor's office, and now we've expanded it to include other departments that honestly use the policy probably more than even auditor or H R. We don't have a lot of capital purchases, at least in our office and bidding and things like that where we, we have the other departments um, be able to speak to some of those.
So more of a working committee than it's been.
More of a working committee, yeah, yeah, because it also didn't meet the previous one, didn't that vary like only as needed? And this is more of like, if you're going to be on the committee, you likely will be assigned a policy to, you know, review. And it really be more of like a working group, so.
And then we can attend as we want.
Yeah, that was going to be a question, I guess, from Mike, is let's say one of us has a policy that we want to run through, policy review that are not, if we've got two supervisors named and at the meeting, and another supervisor wants to bring a policy, does that now become an open meeting?
Oh.
Yeah, so that's important.
Boy, this is going to come up at some point.
Or does it make more sense at that point for us to have one named supervisor that allows us to play, even if it's a named supervisor, an alternate that allows us the flexibility to?
I could see a situation where you've got a third supervisor who's pushing their policy in back. Let's just, let's use a policy that's going to be coming up either next month or later, for that local, for the local preferences, I mean. It, it could be a situation where, yeah, that supervisor would want to speak in support of or about the policy that's being discussed there, while the other two would be deliberating about it. The question is, well, is that speaking about to deliberation by the board, and I think that it could. My strong preference, without going, you know, to IPED and talking to their attorney about it, because I kind of know what her answer is going to be. My strong preference would be that we would create in advance that one of the other, one of the supervisor members in the committee would choose not to attend that meeting, I know that is kind of antithetical to what we want going on at committees, but I think it avoids the, the potential that we have a, what would look like a non-public meeting of the board supervisors. Now, the other thing we could do is, you know, the meeting of the committee is public. So I suppose you could open up a special meeting of the board supervisors and create an agenda and call it a room session to try meeting with the, with the policy review committee. I think it's a lot easier going the other route personally.
So say you kind of have one Christmas case as we spend and then floaters the other.
To me, that makes sense, yeah, any of us can go and absorb, right, it's just a matter of, we've got two active voting members and a, a third supervisor wanting to speak to an issue, that's where we would really.
And I think as a board member, maybe the first thing you do is go to those two board members and say, hey, are either of you planning not to attend? Then your answer is easy, probably, probably tee it up to the entire board because somebody else has the same idea.
Yeah.
And, and then if somebody's planning not to attend anyway, well then your, your answer becomes much simpler. Otherwise, if they're both planning to attend, you say, well, would one of you be willing to step aside so I can focus on an issue that's on there?
No.
Just like food and beverage kind of, you're for the preference, it was just kind of, you wanted to be there.
Right.
So, um, we'll probably, our next meeting is, I said it earlier, it's the second Wednesday, June tenth, I think it is, maybe June eleventh, I might have that wrong. Um, so I'll be sending out materials about that, and I got a recap from the last meeting anyways for providing on assignments, but yeah, anyone's welcome to attend that one, and then I would think following that meeting, we'll probably come back to the board with the committee, you know, assignments and, and some kind of charter procedures or something. Help, anybody interested to understand what, what's being asked of the working group? June eleventh, thank you, at ten fifteen A M in this room, eventually we will go down to the lower level once treasurer's office is back to their home base, so. But for next meeting, June eleventh, ten fifteen A M, here.
All right, and the last thing I want to bring up is working conditions for staff. And when I started as apprentice of the electric trade, worked for a contractor, it always come out with this drill and this box and we spent more time trying to keep this thing, parts together on it so it could just use it. And we spent more time driving back and forth trying to keep this thing working. You don't make, yeah, then the contractor come back and says, well, we're over hours, we can't get this job done and make money on it. So I looked at that, when I was looking, considering the stuff going on with this evidence building for our staff and for the sheriff's office, it was the same scenario for me. When I'm hearing that we are sending people on the road, back and forth with the stuff, I just see this as a, not just a time saving, but a cost saving opportunity for us to get to gather there. I have friends in law enforcement, I, I support law enforcement, I also support our, our folks in the county that do that work day to day, in and out, whether it's law enforcement or on the roads. And to me, this made the most sense in taking care of our folks and just, I wanted to say it earlier and I'm going to wait, but I just, this is important, that they have the ability to do their job, so I'm glad to be part of that.
So, the evidence intake?
Yes.
Oh, and I would say I would second that, other than I asked for the numbers and never, they were never provided. That's what I wanted, the justification for how many things were being done, how many times it was being used or what dollars we could be saving and those types of things, that was all, it wasn't that you didn't support the staff, it's just that, show me the dollars and the numbers.
Were they able? I don't want to keep dragging this on.
No, I don't either, I don't either, but it was not into, because I didn't support the staff at all. And like I said, I knew the working relationship between Waterloo and the county was already good. They share, they do things together, they reach out to each other for help, and they would have done so without any, even a dollar into this, but it was something we should do as a, you know, as a partner. And, but no, as far as that, it was never provided, and that's why I said, any other department has to come make a case for why we're asking for this and, and I didn't think it was something that was out of the ordinary to just say, give us some numbers, give us some cases, give us some costs, tell us how many dollars and hours and that type of thing. Same thing any other department would have done, that's all. So, thank you, don't want to, you labor it, you did it, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to, I'm glad to see it pass, I mean, I think it will be a huge friendship.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right, motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.